I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes in the previous meeting. With motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Motion carries.
Agenda.
The motion approved, we have a second.
Sorry.
We have a second.
Okay.
Further discussion.
Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Are you doing it in English?
No.
I think that was.
Okay. Crystal.
So I wanted to talk about evaluations for the year. Yes, so many of you guys all know the importance of the evaluation and I was kind of one of the, when I go back to the YouTube videos, kind of one of the reasons why you guys brought me on was to make sure we had job descriptions, evaluations in place and so just, to move forward with them, we were looking at having them completed by the end of October so they could be looked at for raises in the month of November if they, if raises aren't being given out. But is there any questions on the evaluations?
To the agenda, should say evaluations.
Evaluation discussion.
Some of the importance, of course, on the evaluations is for us to have that documentation if there is issues and that the employee has been made aware of it so they can try to correct them and have difficult conversations that they need to be happening. It's one opportunity for the supervisor, but some of my questions I have for you guys is, do we want to get evaluated? And I mean like the portfolio holders, do you guys want to evaluate who you oversee? I guess that it's all up to you guys and how you guys want to do that. My suggestion would be if you do one, you need to do all.
I have to do any ones that I'm, what I'm wondering.
Okay, you do do them. Okay.
I would contribute to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it took a little bit of hand on, the commissioners on the department heads.
Sure.
Yeah, and I, I had Crystal come in and visit with us, but it's simply because I wasn't sure who was doing evaluations and who wasn't and the question of if, if some of us are going to do them, then all of us should do them and also should we be doing evaluations of the elected officials or just the people that are hired that are department heads? Just so we, we're across the board, all on the same page and doing the same thing. So we don't, we want to do to make sure we're handling things correctly.
I think the ones where hired, elected, that's up to the public, you can either evaluation.
That's kind of where I was, but Lucas, you look like you're.
How, how is standardized of a, of a process, you know, is there a way that we can make sure that even though we're all overseeing different portfolios and department heads, that any given person's evaluation would look substantially similar to anybody else's evaluation? They're not necessarily in substance, because you can parse it.
Well, it's a standard form.
Yeah.
Okay. Crystal, you got that flipped together. I don't, it wasn't in there.
Yeah.
She showed it to me, so.
So kind of what I've been doing with departments is right now is letting them tailor it somewhat to their departments because there are different questions for each department that need to be asked and where their performance is with them, so that's kind of, but I do have just a standard form on different, you know, like the countabilities and different things like that that can show their meeting expectations. Like until the department had the main focuses on that meet, if they're meeting expectations or not and then they're given what direction they need to be going to meet expectations, so that's kind of where it's at, like that forms.
I do, I do one on the tax director, I do one at the law enforcement center administrator there. I do not do one at the senior head, I don't feel that's necessary myself.
Oh, okay.
There's such a large board there and maybe other agencies, I feel we could.
Sure.
I just kind of have a slide there, I guess.
Okay. And then also what we've been, I've been working on with the department heads is getting job descriptions and because a lot of the job descriptions seem to be quite outdated, so I have a standard form for job descriptions and we've been trying to get them complete. I do have some department heads that have completed theirs and so what I have done is I know, but I'm going to give it to you guys to review and to make sure that everything's accurate on it and if that's okay.
How would you do it at ABL?
Um, yep, we reviewed job description of the evaluation.
Every department had a job description?
Yep.
Okay. And that was kept up, they can set up the number of years ago?
Yeah, yeah.
They, have they updated that on our evaluations or?
Annually, the job descriptions were annually.
There's changes to be?
Unless there was any major changes during, throughout the year, if there's any job duties that would change or anything like that, then they would of course update it at the time and make sure the employee signs off on it, the department did. And that's just to make sure if it ever comes back with the employee having any issue that we can go back and say, well, you did, we did review it, you signed off on it, so.
The job description of the people that are elected within the courthouse are, is there a part in there to how to handle the public? Maybe I should put it in words of how to be congenial, congenial to the public, of be, you know, aware of their concerns, their feeling.
So I know one department did have where, because they come into confrontation with the public every once in a while and we kind of, we stated it in there to be handled in the professional manner, is how we kind of stated it in there.
They come in contacted the public once in a while?
Yeah.
A lot?
A lot, yeah.
But they're the ones that are paying the people's selves.
Right, sure.
I think it's a good idea to understand that and probably remind your employees and your department heads that.
Sure, no, that, yeah, I can definitely do that. So when we have our next department head, we need to discuss evaluations and how we're moving forward with them. That's one thing I can for sure bring up on.
Commissioners are all well aware that they're working for the public, people around town and we want to make sure that our department heads and all the employees are aware of that also. I know sometimes it's hard to deal with the public, but we have to figure out a way to do it, I guess.
Okay. Further discussion, I guess. Are we, I don't think we need a formal motion or anything, but so we're going to go ahead with doing evals on department heads that aren't elected that seems to be looked at, at least from our standpoint and obviously the regular evaluation process that has gone on to pass then for employees from the department heads to handle it.
And then for job descriptions, do we want elected officials to have a job description?
Well, there's all in sentry code.
Right.
So, so they don't need a, yeah, that's all laid out of it, but to just make sure we have updated job descriptions for anybody that's not an elected official, so.
It wouldn't hurt to have a copy of what's in sentry code for the elected official. Wouldn't hurt that at all to have it, have it, may remind it of it, I would think. It would probably help to remind me of it.
And then, so my next question then is if a department isn't calling for with evaluation, getting evaluation completed, how would we like to handle them? You want me just to contact the portfolio list with that department head and?
I'd do it this month. I got, tax directors, I guess I just got to sit down and meet with everyone I remember both free and law enforcement, I do the same thing here this month, August, so kind of ahead of the budget session.
Yeah, I would say run it through the portfolio holder.
Okay.
If there's a problem with any of the departments, that's whoever the portfolio holder is.
Yeah, I have you as well, that's what you do. Chance that it is not resolved, then obviously it'd be escalated to the commission, but generally speaking, it resolves, let anything with the portfolio.
Okay, that sounds good. And then the next question I have is if they, I don't want to put my question, but if an employee's not meeting expectations, how should the department, department heads be handling that? Which is, you know, and me and Adam kind of visited about it. If you do give out a 2% raise, they get their 2% raise, but if they're due for a step increase, they wouldn't get that step increase if they're not meeting expectations. But it would be reevaluated like within a six-month period and so I don't really want to handle that part, that would be a two days.
Well, whatever we do, if we're going to do anything with respect to that, we're going to need to make sure that we have it in writing because you really, really don't want to treat one employee one way with regard to paying another employee another way.
Yeah, it can't be over for, it has to be, yeah, but, yeah, it's just the concept of tying the, the call is going to be an automatic, but, but it's tying the step to an evaluation, to a positive evaluation result. And then the question of, I, I wasn't sure if like a, you know, because I don't think it's necessarily a, you know, if you have things as an employee that need to be adjusted, you know, you shouldn't have a whole year of detriment to, you know, you know, towards you. So three months or six months or something like that is an eval stage. I mean, how, how does the school do it, Jeff? Do you have any guidance there?
I have no idea.
Just curious.
I know in our, in our policy, it is written in there that salary increases are not automatic and they're based on performance evaluation. Of course stated in there, but.
So it's just a matter of how, how much of a timeframe should you give before allowing a re-eval then basically?
Would you, would you be willing to look at some other counties and see something positive, that other counties would have some review on this and see how they handle performance or lack thereof, concerns with respect to pay scale?
How do you do that at ABL?
Um, so how they pretty much do is they have, would have a budget, a percentage that they would be allowed to give employees and they could kind of maneuver to, to say like, the max was 3% to give an employee. They could say if they're not doing a, but don't have immediate expectations, they could give that employee just the 1% and then allocate that other percentage to another employee that really was above standards. So I mean, they, the department had kind of got some leeway to work with it on how their employees were doing.
So it kind of left up to the department?
It was, yeah.
How many times did it get used a year?
What was that?
How many times did it get used?
Get used?
Yeah, how many times, how many reductions was there in their salaries?
Um, you know, it, it may be three, four.
Three to four people?
Yeah.
Uh, 325?
Yeah, out of like, yeah, 200. So there, there wasn't all that many because a lot of department heads did address it during, throughout the year and so when it came to evaluation time, the employee would usually have it under control and know that they wouldn't be getting a raise unless they did keep up with that performance, so.
Yeah, in the past, I've been allowed to do that, you know, not give one person a step increase and maybe give it to someone else. So we have done that in the past.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I don't think that that's unreasonable, but I do think it would be good if as much as possible across departments, all department heads utilize the same sort of system to evaluate whether or not to give a step increase.
Right.
That's essentially why we wanted to break the conversation here because there's been differences in how each department has done it, you know, and it's just kind of been how it's been, I think, and just so we can standardize process, you know, but it has to be able to be tailored to each department as well, but we can kind of be all on the same page at least.
But yeah, I, I would like it if, if we can see what some other counties have done, if you could look into that and bring that back to us.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have for questions.
Any other question? Crystal. Yeah, thanks, Crystal. I appreciate it. Roger.
Got an estimate for Psalm panels down in the big beater down in the basement for $9,919. Last time I talked to him was probably six weeks ago, but I left a message on his phone yesterday saying that he talked to you guys tonight and if there's anything that changed, you get back to me. And I never heard anything, so whether or not we want to go ahead with that, one thing, they used to do and no longer do, now they, like a four by eight sheet rather than running it floor to ceiling all the way around. They said they found the, just putting it next to the ceiling, waiting that wind flies next to the ceiling all the way around, that was just as good and, and cost a little less, use less materials. And then they would do that, where, and then of course there's some areas done in the basement where they just can't because of wire molding and whatever coming out through the wall, but they also said there was probably six areas like here in this ceiling, they would stick at least one piece right in this open area here and then probably in the back, back there in the open area of the ceiling down in the basement, they would also stick some to the ceiling, so.
I appreciate you going and following this up when we started talking about it last year.
And it's been brought up a few times, but doing this, so whether or not we want to go through with it, I guess.
The, who's using these? Is everybody in town that uses these?
I, it's a standard, you know, just like I think the, the ones we have in the gym, you know, little beige colored fiberglass. I mean, everybody uses roughly the same thing. When you look in like churches or whatever, if you look at them, they're all the same. They might be a little thicker or some might be thicker than others, but this was just the standard, what is it, two inch?
Two inches is the standard?
Yeah, pretty much.
Roger, is this something that you've budgeted in this year's budget?
Yeah, it easily.
I'd go ahead and make a motion and approve this bit.
Well, second.
Okay.
As somebody that's been through enough meetings downstairs to know what the acoustics in that big beater, our last thing desired, but.
Anything else we go ahead and do that and find out it works well, we could do this door for them too?
We have to take it a room at a time. Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve the bid with Golden Valley Supply for acoustic panels and nothing, enough big beater. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, roughly six weeks ago, we had all of our humidity outside. Had a lot of condensation coming from the cooling, the van, what's the word I'm trying to think of, the fins up in the air conditioning upstairs. Anyway, we had condensation running from the penthouse through the wall all the way down to the basement. And I finally got ahold of Johnson Controls and he said, I mean, did the remodel, the refit, the air conditioner roughly, what that was, 10 years ago. They said they had some, what do you call drip pans and, and whatever that should have been installed then, but never worked. And we've had, I've had a little trouble like this before, a little bit of leaking, but nothing like we have, it's never, I've had some dripping on the ceiling up there at floor before, but it's never gone all the way to the basement. So anyway, but he said with installing these fans that that should take care of the problem. And we even had an engineer, mechanical, now they should have known that something like this should be done, but.
Lot of damage with it?
Pardon?
Lot, any damage with it?
No, I don't think so. It, uh, it all dried up pretty well. I knocked a hole in here and there and left some air in and dried it out and so.
Give it a lot of water, Roger?
Yeah.
The, what?
You put the fans where?
What now?
What fan did you put in?
Um, I, in a, in the janitor's room on second and in third floor, knocked a hole in the wall to actually let some air, get some airflow going in there to help dry it up and rigged up quite a little catch basin that ran into the drain on the third floor and actually worked fairly well. Kept a lot of water from, from going down all the way down through the wall, but, and then after that, then I got ahold of Johnson Controls and he said, yeah, we can take care of this, so. Better get it taken care of. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, for your motion, they're going to take care of it, right?
They'll do it if we like give them the go ahead.
Is it going to be cost involved or they're?
Well, uh, you, oh, don't you have a, well, it's $2,400, sorry.
I'll move it through now.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the contract for drip pans to fix the AC problem.
Further discussion.
They're going to use your idea then? Are you going to charge them?
Engineering.
Come on now, are you? Want me to tell them that?
My idea is, is kind of after the passing, it'd be better to get it fixed before it gets to there.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Steve. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, reason I'm on the agenda is I have an opportunity, it was presented through the Service Association. I'm sure all of you got the, an email a couple of weeks ago to go to the White House for the presidents. And last week we had our meeting and they asked if I'd consider going, if I could. So my request is that we offer S.M. out of state travel to go partake on, I think it's August 30th. So we're talking about two or three days, three days probably.
You're going to meet him at Fargo?
Huh?
Are you going to meet him in Fargo?
No, we're actually going to DC.
Oh, I heard he's coming to Fargo again.
No, I haven't heard that, so. He's invited, he's, well, he invited commissioners and then he invited, I think it's North Dakota, South Dakota and Wyoming. This go around, you get about two or three hours in a session down there, so I think it'd be beneficial.
Have you ever been to the White House?
Never had.
It's a nice place.
More of that out of state travel?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to allow Steve out of state travel to White House for the conference.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
The last time we were there for the peace officer memorial beach, we couldn't get anywhere near the White House.
Mr. Nelson goes to Washington?
Yes. Thank you.
When is this again?
August 30th, so it's quick.
No, I was going to ask you a quick question. Have you been in contact with the Highway Patrol or DOT about those signs for Edmore? Have they talked about it?
I, the last we talked, I called them and they said they were, they are going to put them up and have them replaced and I guess I kind of forgot.
I just figured they'd take care of it, but they haven't shown up yet, so.
Really? I will make another call.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that, I thought it was done.
That's okay, at least that's what I.
The last call I made to, to, um, who was with the highway department that I talked to? I think it was Mike. He said, we got the plan, it won't take, it's, and that's, I left it because I figured it'd be done, so I, my fault is.
No, that's, no, it's not your fault, it's just I, I was, it was brought up to that it hasn't been done yet.
Okay.
At least that they don't see.
All right, I will make another phone call and see what happened.
Okay, I, I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Kevin.
Okay, start off with the updates on our projects. The graveling, we only got one mile left to go and Ram's coming seven, well, six. Ram's coming six. Soakers broke down, so it's kind of feeling a mile left.
One mile left.
Yeah, the first time, west.
Yeah, east west, right on the floor.
Closest is there. Uh, any questions along the gravel? Okay, the paving, Ram's got one in the military road and outland area is going to start on the 28th now. The plant will be moving in this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I'm not exactly sure what date, but they're predicting the 28th, that I would up around it, so that's going to go fast, so once they get started.
They have put the bag a couple of times already, so. Okay.
Paver patches, we found about, let's see, five spots that we want to do this year and altogether they'll cost 45,000. I have a budget of 90,000. I think we're going to do a couple of spots on the Hudson Road. One on Old Two, just east of Towne a little ways. And then some on three north of B. There's some culverts that have sold pretty bad just off of 17.
Yeah.
We're going to fix those and then some center on and stuff.
There's one up on County Four, about right down on the curb, becomes south from 17, right down the curb, there's a hole in that road.
Little hole there, we might have to patch up. We're going to have to patch quite a few areas.
There's a hole in the road north of, on County Three, north of the burg, all the way to probably, it's either north or south, I can't remember for sure. But I hit it, I know that.
It was like a hole or a soap cover?
Yeah, it's a culvert, right, it's in a culvert.
There's a good one over a culvert right there.
Well, maybe that's the one you're talking about?
Right next to my desk, please.
Sleeping, I'm, driving away.
That one I'm looking at, I haven't paid attention to.
Yeah, well, you got to pay for much money, take care of it, you can take care of it, I guess.
Was that one up on Ford?
Yeah, it is, it's white on top, we put concrete in there once and finally put that one.
Just culvert, huh?
Yep.
Culvert's all right?
That's a concrete culvert, but the lip fell off one of the sections, so we just got to concrete it back together, yeah. That's the concrete.
You gotta do something there.
Yeah. Uh, bridge work, I don't know if you all got my email, but now that's scheduled to come September 18th. I'm pretty sure that's a firm date this time. And I did call the, I called the winches and the bakers up there and I didn't know that's what was happening, so they're aware.
I know the LTAPE is doing a, a live demonstration up there?
Yeah.
That day, so I would think that would be pretty firm if they're sending out that invitation.
I don't have much to do with the LTAPE part of it, but I'm going to be on site. But yeah, I think we're, I mean, all the steel is there, they started bending it or forming it and now next week they'll start welding it, so. That's three weeks of welding, two and a half, three weeks, so they should.
That was in Minnesota, right? Those are putting it together?
Fargo, Fargo.
Fargo.
The steel is in Fargo now, so. And they had one more they had to get out of the shop before they started on the hards and that goes out of the shop on Friday of this week. So any questions there? And, uh, one of the contractors, Morris Steel Co., had some leftover sand on one of the projects they did and we needed sand this year anyways and they had about close to 300 ton, they wanted to sell us for $8 a ton, which is an excellent price for us. So I was entertaining the motion to buy those 300 ton, so.
Okay, second. Motion in a second to buy 300 ton of sand from Morris Steel Co. Price of it, $25,000.
Further discussion. Where is the sand at?
Uh, it was up on, they did those shoulders on 17 going, and had some outdoor sand on there, so I think it was sitting in the start, brother.
Didn't want to haul it back home, huh?
Right, well, state may have did it out there, which, yeah.
Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
And then the annual local, regional local roads conference is October 17th and 18th in Rapid City. Registration's $100 a room for two nights, $178, $98 and transportation won't be anything.
President going to be there?
Yeah. Honestly, I hope not. I'm not a good politician.
Well, he probably isn't either. But you're getting a job now.
Second. Who made the motion?
I didn't even hear it, Chris. I thought you guys were just laughing here.
We have motion in a second to allow Kevin to go to the regional local roads conference. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
And then every year we put the ad in the paper, get the mold, ditches, mold, and movement was second.
We have a motion in a second. Putting it out of the paper for the mold and ditches. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. All right. Got that?
Thank you.
So many papers up there. Too many papers in there.
Oh, that's on it.
I got one. Uh, terminal road is out on that Avenue, and... Yep, it is, and then that little section of gravel, more of the state put up to the road tracks on the truck rail itself. We're doing that, so that's probably not part of the terminal road, part of the truck rail, but that's getting done also. So maintenance nightmare for us.
Oh, yeah, that little bit in it, because you can't get the blade on it and all that.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good, any other questions? Okay. Uh, it's unfinished business, Home Rule Charter discussion. I guess Lucas, you weren't at the last meeting, so I mean, if you'd like to, start off since you chaired the committee.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I wasn't, uh, in attendance for the meeting. It was brought up the first time, um, but to, to go over some of the things that I know some of people already touched on. The reason that, you know, the, the Home Rule Charter Committee voted to, to send, uh, its recommendation that, that the Ramsey County, both look at and approve for, uh, a board of people, uh, that this particular charter is because of, of the work that went into it and, and, uh, the number of different perspectives and thoughts that, that went into it, and we did a great job, I believe. I got the chance to work alongside some really talented people who were really dedicated to what we were trying to accomplish. Um, and I think in the end, you know, we put together a very strong document, and it's my conviction that, uh, if this document, as it was written, were to be in place for the benefit of the county, that, that Ramsey County would be in a, in a very strong position as we move forward into the future. And so I'm happy to, to answer any questions that, that any of the other commissioners may have. Uh, but it is my very sincere hope that we do, uh, vote to allow it to go before the people and let the people, uh, have a say on whether or not they feel it's valuable as well.
Okay. Do we need to ask here? Nothing looks illegal in there?
No.
Okay. Any questions?
Committee members, you have here Paula, Susan Kennedy, and Adam, or Carrie, or Candy?
Any other committee members have anything to add, or Paula, Susan, Carrie, Candy?
I think we've added everything we could possibly add. Many, many hours of adding.
I would agree with Lucas, I guess that, um, you know, I, I think it is a good document. There were a lot of compromises made by everybody, but I think in the end, um, everybody for the most part was happy with it.
I agree.
Thank you. Further discussion. And just, uh, as a reminder, um, essentially, we, we don't have to make the decision if it's gonna go on today or not, but if we don't, we have to have a special meeting, essentially.
It has to be done by when?
By the, what, third of September, second of September, so before our meeting in September. So we won't meet again previous to the deadline, that's what I'm saying.
The third is Labor Day?
Yeah. It's sixty-five days previous to the election or sixty-four days, I think.
Okay. Uh, Labor Day, I mean, the... The fourth is actually the deadline, uh, four p.m.
Four, what, on the fourth?
Not the day I, I'm running, actually, we're ready.
Okay, right, I wasn't aware of this. That was interesting.
I emailed just to clarify that.
Sinclair, I, okay, we were kind of questioning if...
Okay, uh, that may not straighten out.
Well, to, to that end of taking action, I would make the motion that the Ramsey County Commission vote to approve, uh, that the Home Rule Charter as written by the committee appear on the ballot in November.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
Oh, I'm kind of, I'm, oh, Mr. Chairman, uh, and that, and that, uh, that its appearance on the ballot will use the verbiage that was recommended by the Charter Committee as well.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the table, we have a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Further discussion.
No, I think the committee has done really a, a lot of work on it and a lot of due diligence, and it does provide some, I think, beneficial financial budgeting avenues for the commission to utilize some of the feet around the road if they still choose to do so, so.
Okay. The, uh, the only question I would have, and I was reading this again last night, 'cause we're both a sixth time, I, I finally, I caught it. And I don't know if this was our intent or not, uh, speaking to Lucas on this. Because I, I think the intent of the committee was to allow the ability to take leftover mills and, uh, use them if needed, if the general fund ever caps out. Correct?
Yes.
Yeah, well, the provision at the end of number two, in Article Two, states notwithstanding the other provisions of the subsection, which we, I, I don't believe there's anything else in the subsection that would preclude it. Uh, the Board of Economy Commissioners will not claim able dedicated mill levies with one another or with the general fund levy. To me, that's saying that, that precludes us from doing that. And I think it just, I think it might have got missed, is what I'm...
Is, is, would that be your interpretation of that, Carrie?
So, so what you're saying, Adam, is, let's say we had two leftover in the road department, we can't move it from one corner?
Yes, I think that's...
We can't ever do that, we can't do that at all.
We can't do that right now.
Right now?
Right now. And if this passed, it would be the same way, I believe, yeah. Uh, 'cause...
Really?
I, I think so, uh, 'cause I, I think we, we read it, read it, read it, read it, and, and I think we dismissed the provision at all, honestly. Not to open up, uh, a huge discussion, but at the same time, I wanna make sure it's right.
Yeah, I, I totally understand that we can move the mill around that corner.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the big benefits of, yes, I believe so as well.
If that's not there, I don't know.
Well, we can make the change.
Well, we, no, we can...
We can make the change right now, that's why I wanted to bring it up now before anything happens, so, that I noticed it, and I might be completely wrong. But I wanted to bring it up.
That's the first one that I would really be interested in.
Yes.
Being able to do that.
And I agree.
Seems like our legislators and our state governments are behind that, writing the rules for how to use the mills. You know, it shouldn't be up to the county's discretion, or, or we shouldn't be anti, if we can't move it from one gathering, but this is the only way we can do that.
Providing that local control.
Right.
You know, and, and stop having the state tell us how we can spend it.
Right.
Well, and, and I think it was definitely the intent of the committee, uh, the whole entire time that that was part of it, right, so...
Well, yeah, I'm not saying that, but if we misinterpreted that, well then...
I think it was just what we're saying. And I apologize if I didn't catch it.
I gotta bring that somewhere, that's all intended.
That was our intent, yes, and I thought that, and I said, boy, that's kind of, that, that doesn't, I, I don't think that's what our intent is, I think we either, either it got, you know, and, I'm not blaming anybody because Felder was stuck going on crazy, so either we missed it, or we just missed it as a committee, you know?
Well, would it, would it be beneficial to then table this motion until the next meeting, so we can...
I want that hammered out.
So we can...
I want the right answer on that.
That's fine.
Without, without, we have to make a rush, um, Carrie, make a rush decision on something?
You wanna make that motion, I'll make it.
Well, the motion, we still, we have a motion on the table.
Do we have a motion on the table?
And, and if, if we, if we want to, if the committee or the motion wants to pull a motion, they can.
Well, likely, likely I will, but... But I want that correct, make sure we know what we're doing there.
Yeah.
Given the fact that it, it would fall within the time constraints of our next meeting, uh, with down the avenue.
Well, yeah, and, and, and part of it comes down to, in all honesty, I think in looking at other, uh, you know, we, we, we use the, the previous Ramsey County Home Rule work as a template basically to go forward, and this was in the previous document, so I'm thinking it probably just got paled over, and we just missed it. I mean, in all honesty, 'cause the intent of the committee wasn't to have that statement in there, I don't believe.
And Susie, Paula, is that kind of your recollection of...
Yes, yeah.
And I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn saying that that's what our intent was, because I think that, that's one of the, one of the benefits you can have, I think we felt, because you, you don't have to put an additional tax on, but you can use something from another place that's already, you know, in statute.
Right.
And you can, you know, just basically budget the more fish channel EP. I hope we never have to run into the general fund cap.
See, and, and I guess the way that I would interpret this, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a while to read this, but my interpretation of it would be, um, that the other portions of Subsection Two, which is, which is what it's saying, notwithstanding the other provision of the subsections in Subsection Two, uh, you can't do it, however, you, you can utilize the, the mill levy, uh, for, let's see here, for its public and proprietary functions, activities, operations, undertakings, improvements. Uh, you know, basically what I'm saying is, is that, that would cover any regular operation of the county that I'm aware of. Um, and then that, that last provision basically says if you're not gonna be doing something that's with regular...
Yeah.
So basically, the reason that I think, 'cause we did go over it, and I think that that's how we interpreted it at the time.
Yeah, I don't, we, we had hours and hours and hours of time, most of it was...
So basically, what you're saying is, is you can, in the rule levels, uh, you can utilize, uh, mills for its public and proprietary functions, activities, operations, undertakings, and improvements, right there. And then at the end it says, notwithstanding the other provisions of the subsection, which these, these are all the other provisions of the subsection, uh, you cannot co-mingle mill levies. So basically, the way that I would interpret that, and the less Carrie has a different interpretation of it, and, and potentially, we might, we may want to clarify that to make sure it's personally clear, but...
I would think it would be wise to clarify and make sure it's personally clear.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, with that in mind, um, I, I would withdraw my motion and make a new motion, which is, um, that the, uh, State's Attorney clarifying that subsection to, to be aligned with what the framers of the document intended. Um, and, and that, uh, it can be considered as amended next.
Okay. So essentially, your motion is to table with the recommendation to the State's Attorney to, uh, clarify and possibly draft changes that would be...
To, to that particular subsection. Which, I mean, I think is more of, again, if I'm, my interpretation is it's more of a clarification rather than a, an overhaul.
Okay, so we're gonna, that the motion is to table until allow Carrie to take a portion of a look at it and make a recommendation. Further discussion, or, we need a second.
I, I will go ahead and...
Same, we have a second, then. Uh, and, uh, a motion to table doesn't allow further discussion, so all in favor of table and vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. And it will be tabled until the fourth.
You're totally sure, you have to a four p.m. on the fourth, right?
I trust you. Okay. Fantastic. Seems like every time you come to a meeting, you give me more work.
That's okay.
That works out. Okay, discussion on alcohol beverage ordinance. And I think it's on our desk.
So I'm gonna just jump in for a quick second, because I think Candy had emailed out the actual ordinance as it stands, and then I put on everybody's desk and then proposed change, which would be with the blank effect of these.
There you go.
And essentially, what it does, um, is changes one provision of this current ordinance, which makes mandatory server training an optional sanctionable type of, um, provision and makes it mandatory. That's the change, and that was, um, something that I think the Health Department was wanting, somebody wanted something drafted with that provision to be considered.
Do you think it was the same?
Yes. Yeah, the only change is making the server trainer, server training more recording.
Changes would all be on page nine in the top of lessons on page one.
I don't, but previously was there, yeah.
On eleven, so no changes on road through weight, just nine, ten, and eleven.
Correct, anything that was changed, the original has to align on there.
Carrie, could you forward me a copy of that?
You want that?
Oh, she, take that, we should have that.
Okay, then, my question would be to Liz then, the, uh, city's, uh, ordinance that deals with this, that, do they allow ninety days for, within ninety days of...
We're doing, we're doing seventy-five days.
Seventy-five days.
Yeah, we're short now.
Okay. Just, just so we have some idea of what the city's doing, so we could match if we wanted to be...
That just gives the, the establishment time to say that person's gonna work out. It also gives us time, you know, to get classes, optional, we'd said, has been terrific, we do these, uh, five times a year, six times a year, we have, last week, forty-seven people attended. So they're very well attended, um, so we've got a nice rhythm going as far as timing.
Okay. The other, I'm just gonna throw out there too, there's a provision in Section Eighteen, I think it's on page eight. Previously, the server training was sanctioned, that could be considered by the commission for any violation, so that would remove that as a sanction option. And that's...
So in other words, it's saying that that's just not a step that we have in the ordinance process anymore, basically, if there's an infraction, then that goes to the U or responsibility of... Of bringing a charge if necessary. Okay? Okay? Uh, further discussion from the commission or any action?
It may not be necessary, but just a question for you, Carrie, um, based on what I'm reading here, would, would failure to comply with responsible alcohol server training as this is written be grounds for the revocation of the license?
Revocation, suspension, you bet, yeah, you grant the reaction.
I just, I don't see it listed as anywhere in the law.
It's a requirement that they have to do it at the shell.
And look, it's just so you know, just as with this, as with the city ordinance, uh, the Public Health Department, which we, mainly into the training, uh, will be responsible for doing intermittent machines checks to make sure that they have their cards with them, and that they're on our, on, on, unless it's the people who have taken the training class. It's just too much for the police and the Sheriff's Department to work on something like that. So that comes with us doing this too, as well, and that as well.
Yeah, and that, and that's fine, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting in a two...
Right, no, I understand, okay.
If, if we do put in a...
Sure.
And all training servers are getting their cards and, and so they have them with the expiration.
They walk out, now they walk out of training with your card.
Nice.
First two classes, we nailed them and that became a little bit of a debacle, so now while the class is going on, I take their registration information and I write up the cards while they're taking the class.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? And the process would be, if we want to move forward with this, I guess we'd have to set a days of employment number in there. Uh, and then we would have to move it towards public hearing for two days of the ordinance.
Yeah, public hearing.
Yeah, just like we did last night, yeah, and that would also, at that point in time, open up the entire ordinance for amendment, but we would have to make the amendment, obviously. If we wanted to make any further changes. Okay? And, and the option is always, we can, we can either set sets, move forward with it now, or obviously table a little bit of time to look at changes, so maybe I guess the pressure is a little...
And for the, for the public hearing, what kind of notices recorded on the action?
Two notices, I believe that's one each, we're gonna double check, County Administration, there might be...
Two notices that leave us on each week. I'm gonna double check. County investigation, it might be. Think I have to notify the establishment.
Yeah.
So does it, does it take probably thirty days to do it?
Yeah. Yeah.
But probably two weeks public notice in the papers or something, you know, fourteen days or something. Because we, you know, we've always in the past, health hearings like this in the evening to allow, at this second meeting to allow people to be able to make it. If we wanted to do something, we could do it the second evening of September or.
I could do it the second evening of October, and that might explain you.
Yeah, we could do that as well.
So I'd make that motion. We have scheduled a public hearing for discussion. Set for October.
Okay. We have the motion to, the only thing I would say is that the motion would have to include approval of the amended document for the public hearing as well as we need to then set how many days, because that is blank in the document right now. And then, and then also I think previous to the public hearing, we should set a date that it would take effect.
Yeah, right.
So what, what, what would your inclination be on those, on those two amendments?
Is it possible that I can keep my motion that we have a public hearing on the second meeting of October and at our next meeting that we delineate the specifics of what's the safety document?
Okay, then that's the motion I'd like to make. I'm looking at our legal.
I'll side with that.
Okay. We have a motion that we're, we will, the intent looking then to have, have a public hearing on this, the second meeting of October. So the changes will be accepted, but then we just have to set the two different numbers. Okay, that's the next, that's the next meeting. Okay. Okay, that is the motion.
Another change is we don't issue Sunday permits anymore, Carrie.
Or.
We don't your Sunday permits.
No, that's all changed with the.
That's changed with the state.
We don't issue Sunday permits anymore.
Well, that's good, we're gonna clean it up.
That one out of there. Yeah, like a year, maybe two years.
Probably seventeen, so.
Yeah.
Right after we've made this happen. That's usually how it's worked. Well, last time we looked at this, it was the first time it amended since like nineteen thirty-four or something like that. So, hey, we're doing pretty well. We're at that. Okay, so the motion is to schedule the public hearing for the second day of October and then make the changes necessary to be in two. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Thanks, Liz.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay. Approval of twenty nineteen Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance Contract. Wasn't in our track class, we were just having contracts. What's it looking like?
I think I can see it right by my copy. This is quite, it's up in the course.
Six point seven.
Okay, so it's a little better than the high and eight that they were throwing out.
It wasn't the eight.
Okay.
Yeah, it was this little spreadsheet.
I'd go ahead and move through the Blue Cross contract.
Okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract approved for us, for twenty nineteen health insurance, we'll sign the, signing the document. There we go. Thanks. Okay. Further discussion, further questions?
So I mean, we're good here? Washed. Keep up the good work, Kevin.
Six points seven.
Yeah, six points seven. Did you have the paper, did you have the paper in front of you?
I got it in front.
Everybody down with a beat? No, it's okay, it's okay. Yeah. If you have a specific answer, sit down. It's possible, I'm worried. Okay, further discussions. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Reappointment to the late social services board.
Move it forward.
Second. We have a motion and a second to reappoint Andrea Williams to the, correct? I'm very angry. To the late social services board. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. She showed up. Yes. She's, she's a good man. She did two lessons and four scrolls. Okay. Site authorizations.
Motion approved.
All right. Motion and a second to approve the site authorization, was just the one, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion?
I have to review this due to adding a tip.
Oh, yeah, the tip machine.
Okay.
Single further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. That's for the baseball division. They do a bingo. Okay. Visitors and delegations. In the back. We have visitors and delegations here.
Hi, I'm Mandy Ricketts. I'm from the Lake Region Heritage Center. And first of all, I'd just like to take a minute to thank the county commission for the funding and help that you've given in the Lake Region Heritage Center. I'd also like to take this time to clarify a few incorrect statements that were presented to the commission at your last meeting. Our roof has been fixed. Thanks to Mike Gilbertson from AMR working. He generously donated a few hours of his time and the necessary materials. Took some time, but we're very grateful that Mike was able to get us into this busy schedule for this.
Who was that again?
Mike Gilbertson.
Gilbertson, okay.
Yeah.
Give him some YouTube time.
We can send him a letter.
There you go. Yeah, we should. Yeah. Thank you for that, huh?
So because.
I think we should make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to sign a thank you note to Mike Gilbertson. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Hasn't arranged since he takes.
We've been waiting.
I mean, we're gonna, but hey, he gave time and effort and that's, that's the most important thing at this point.
It hasn't been until Christmas.
Okay.
So because of those leaks, there has been damage to the interior of the building due to the height of the ceilings and where that damage is. I'm in the process right now of getting bids from some area professionals to paint and fix the damage. It should have bids by next week, so. There was also some mention of no maintenance being done. I can assure you that there is maintenance being done. During the construction of the ramp, I wanted to avoid being in the way of the heavy equipment, so I wasn't pulling the weeds or doing anything on, around that side of the building or in the back. Since the construction has been completed, the weeds have been cut and sprayed with Roundup and I just continue working on cleaning that up as the Roundup's taking effect. The front steps were mentioned at the last meeting and they have not been in great shape for quite a few years now. I personally have a picture of mine from two thousand thirteen that shows the damage. Steps look similar in that photo to what they do right now. And it, in my review of previous board meeting minutes, it looked as though the steps were considered and should be taken care of within a few months of the June second, two thousand fifteen board meeting. However, the solution proposed by the board at the time was not a viable option. So we've had Mark Lane from the city come to inspect the stairs on behalf of Mike Grassgarth and we're working closely with them right now to find the best way to fix them. It's not as easy as just pouring new concrete and we're trying to find the most inexpensive route. So if we can get in from the bottom and get them fixed from that way, it'll be a lot cheaper than going from the top. So we're just trying to figure out the best solution for that right now. I can keep you up to date on the progress of this as we go along. Regarding the question of payroll, neither myself or the board were contacted to provide accounting statements with the documents that I believe were mentioned in the last meetings or the same ones that were brought to the commission meeting in June. Our payroll expenses were down from April sixth to June twenty-fifth while the board advertised the positions for a new director. On the issue of hours, during the time that there was not a staff at the LRHC, board members would come and open the museum for those who called the number posted on the door. This was not intended to be a permanent solution, but it was the best way to still be able to keep the doors open during the approximate two and a half months without staff. Most of those who called with requests to see the museum were accommodated. Currently, LRHC is open from Wednesday to Friday noon to five and Saturday is on nine, from nine to one. Our fall hours will commence the weekend after Labor Day as Wednesday and Thursday noon to five and Friday nine to five, as there's been a steep decline in weekend visitors in the past month or so. We're also willing to accommodate special tours outside of our regular business hours if given some notice. As for the vision of the Lake Region Heritage Center, first and foremost, it is and always will be a museum. However, the sustainability of it continuing only as a museum is just not feasible. Therefore, the board made the decision of shifting some exhibits from the main floor. There are still displays on the main floor and in my opinion, this has made the actual building more of an exhibit itself. This has already allowed us to host different events such as musicians, art workshops, and a small business meeting with Senator Hyde Camp. In the coming months, we will host the North Dakota Supreme Court to take your cases in the original courtroom on the second floor. We'll be having a kids' Halloween event and hosting some ghost tours the weekend before Halloween. And we will be having a large country Christmas display thanks to Mike Connor's donations to the Lake Region Heritage Center. We feel that holding these events will draw more community members into the building and in turn help put the LRHC back on the map within the community. We will still be a museum with the original building as one of, as one of the best exhibits, but also our second and third floor will be comprised of all historical displays of some sort as well. The main floor always had and will have exhibits, but they will be displayed around the perimeter of the room so that we will be able to pull defense that draws the community in. We believe that by diversifying the building, it will bring more success to the LRHC as a place the community can feel comfortable in visiting. As far as applying for grants go, we continue to apply for all known grants available to us. In fact, in our last board meeting, we were discussing the details of the Devil's Lake Area Foundation Grant and what specifically we were going to be applying for with that one. We also collect rent on the parking spaces. As I was told, it was rumored that we were not doing so anymore. And we hold different fundraisers throughout the year as well to contribute to our funding. I want to again thank you for your support of the Lake Region Heritage Center and I'll be sure to attend at minimum one meeting per quarter to ensure that the county commission is kept up to date on the happenings at the Lake Region Heritage Center going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. I have one question. Are there, have you, obviously, you don't have the scope of what it's gonna take to fix the steps yet, but have you noticed or noted any grant opportunities or anything like that, maybe since it's a, you know, it's a historical building and all that? Through maybe the state or federal that we maybe use to help fix the steps?
The city has actually offered any and everything that they, that we need. So we're hoping that the city's going to help us out quite a bit on that. The Devil's Lake Area Foundation Grant, they don't like to do maintenance type of things for, with those grants. So that one's not a viable option, but I have started to look into other grants available too.
We've also been working with Mary Windy from Devil's Lake Heritage Preservation Commission so that she can help with some of that grant sourcing and writing.
Awesome. Yeah, anything you guys can do together with the Sheriff's Museum and the Maritime and all that is all fantastic, so. Awesome. All right. Questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Okay. Announcements? Anybody have some final comments?
This is one of the law enforcement. The closure notice will be vacated on the fourth of September.
Woo, all righty.
We've been assured of that by, we're there, to a man, a gentleman that's a step above Lance Anderson.
Awesome.
They don't generally vacate them ahead of time, so. It starts with a hundred bucks.
But they're gonna just basically let it expire.
That's what they told me on last Friday. Maybe send an email to Rob and. Have a conversation, so.
Good.
I'm under this total understanding that's what they're gonna do. And Lance Anderson is new to this position to oversee jails. And I invited him to come to a meeting of the enforcement center board in the near future and say, let me know what might he say, he'll be there. And the commission is wanting to be there, be there as he puts his time. Someone with a very accommodating person and he told me that DOC has been running the jail in North Dakota. I think they totally different what they've done in the past, twenty, thirty years. And if they're not up to par, they'll probably go through the same process that we are. And it's a totally different mindset of what they're doing, so. I'm glad we went through this. I think we got our thing straightened out. They seem to be quite happy with what we've done off there, so.
We owe a huge debt of gratitude to Rob and, and as well to, to two commissioners that have represented this commission and its interests on that court. Thank you guys so much for all the hard work you've done.
Mr. Nelson, which should be included.
That's right.
Thank you.
And the sheriff as well.
He's been a great help to me, I know that. Every time I had questions or, how does this work? I'd ask him, and he'd be here telling me, oh, you're living through here, you know? So it's been a long process, but I, I want to put my, all my chickens in the duck shit. That's what they assured me on last Friday, that they're in place to have it vacated by the end of March, so.
End of August.
Awesome. Yeah, I would have to because it's September one, so. Yeah. Well, in, in all honesty, I think it's, I think it's good that they stepped in and helped make things better so that we're doing a better job. And you know, and partially, you know, I think they recognize as, as the state and the new people they have that it was partially on them for years of.
Yeah, they admitted.
Things sliding, I mean, so.
I don't know how many times they admitted that to us as a board and probably Sheriff Nelson and, you know, it's been sliding way too long.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna be that way anymore.
No, and I think that's good for, come to different reasons, but also because, I mean, we've seen it in our budget. We're gonna continue to house more prisoners there. We're gonna keep getting pushed down from, from the state down, so. We need to make sure we're doing as good a job and quality job there.
Mr. Anderson, he was very good on the phone and we had a good conversation with him. Kind of puts you at ease, I guess, so. I was fine, I got through.
And I appreciate all the hard work too, from both of you being on the board. I know it's been a lot of work for the last few years trying to get it all straightened out, so.
But it's, we're coming. Really good meeting last week, Mark and Amy were there and it went good. We worked on our budgets and I think we're actually answering Tom, calling these questions a lot.
I was gonna say with the amount of prisoners that we're housing there now, you guys are gonna be, you have money pulling out.
You know, like you're more like Mark.
Poor cash to work. Obviously, I'm joking, I know it's. I'm obviously joking, I know it's gone, all the upgrades and, and you've had those funds to, to put it back into the facility, but.
But speaking of, of Tom or Colin, did you come to any kind of agreement on mills or memberships or?
We didn't come to any agreement there. We threw out the budgets and I have them all here, you know, for the law to jail and the reentry and the nine-one-one. We had a good, good discussion on nine-one-one and we, and they followed the figures, I won't look them up now, but I think it was around three hundred thousand dollars is what they've been taking from the law enforcement center to supplement nine-one-one forever. This is going on, you know, years. And nine-one-one dispatchers, they open doors in the jail. I think I'm saying this right, it's easier. And so they actually are, you know, do some functions for the jail. They decide to do their nine-one-one duties. Evidently when the call comes in, nine-one-one, an emergency, they're on that. I guess that jail door doesn't be open for a while then, but, you know, but. About three hundred a year annually have been taken from law enforcement over to nine-one-one. So the nine-one-one has always looked good, you know, on paper. And the law enforcement center was always in trouble and Tom or Colin wasn't understanding this at all. And now they are, and the other counties are understanding it. So I think we're gonna be able to get to a better conclusion on the budgets and the finances of the all three entities out there eventually here. It's gonna take another reading, but I think we're all on the same page and we're all understanding. All three entities out there eventually here. It's gonna take another meeting, but I think we're all on the same page and we're all understanding. And we spent. Quite a bit of time at the last meeting.
I just kind of, you know, the other commissioners, you know, have no idea unless they've attended a meeting, how this money goes back and forth. You know, it's three hundred thousand dollars that we're taking on this and putting over here. Like you said, they, they look great and these guys are dying. Well, there's a reason why. You know, the county needs you guys to, to understand that that's why.
Yeah, and I've sat down and talked with Rob, so I can, and Sheriff, I think, once again, just to get some understanding on what's, it's essentially you're multitasking. So instead of having two people sit in the chair. You know, one person on the LAC side, one on the nine one one side, that person can handle both duties at certain times. So they can save some money on the budget, but then essentially, you know. It makes the books look better one way than the other for one, one organization.
And we go back a little farther and when they had a juvenile contract, it was a million dollar contract. I mean, they had money. I mean, it was plus, I mean, everything was fine, you know, and they had money. When that going away. Oh, you know, it was, throw your arms up, not like that, you know? So. That's why we've had to restructure some and that's why we raised the incarceration fee at seventy five dollars. We're not gonna raise the incarceration fee for the next year, that's for sure. I mean, cause everybody in the area is pretty much just right there, you know, seventy five bucks. And we think it's gonna cost the counties a little more. But we need to fund that law enforcement center so we're not running from month to month and sometimes it's red, sometimes naked a little bit. And we just can't live on incarceration fees and, and they won't let us have any federal prisoners yet. Because we don't have that intercom, NTG, or camera setup in there yet.
Which is awesome looking forward.
It's moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're expecting bids on that next month.
Yep.
On the cameras and intercom.
Well, so he's got all the engineering part of it done where everything's got to sit and all that, it's just.
We've got to bid in a month and in next month.
Good deal.
So that's another thing I guess. And, um, but that's kind of the way that stands, but. If in the next week, we should be good to go on. On that closure notice, I feel. And I was assured by him that. If something drastic happens, I guess it'll be all right, so. So I, uh. Anybody else?
Okay. I've got a quick one. Uh, I heard from a member of the esteemed press corps that, uh. Uh, there's a rumor that, that I intend to resign this position. I moved to Grand Forks and I just wanted to tell everyone in the tent, Edson, my fellow commissioners, that there's no validity to that. That's not my intention in case anyone had heard or had concerns of that. That's it.
Somebody else over there still?
It was me. I got, uh, we had our chamber board meeting yesterday. And, uh, just trying to kind of quickly go through some of the things. There, uh, they had their golf tournament, uh, last week, uh, a couple of weeks ago, seventeen teams, twenty-nine sponsors. Fish Fry was, uh, last week, uh, will serve over five hundred people. They tried something new. They went over to the verdict and it probably looks like that worked out really well, uh, just. Getting, uh, people actively to the new location, I guess. A lot better electrical, uh, serve the needs, uh, with all the fryers and, you know. Warmers and coolers and things like that that was needed for that kind of, uh, a crowd, uh, the verdict and their newer electricity of works better for, for that. Wine Walk's coming up, uh, September sixth, uh, limited to four hundred and fifty tickets. Uh, they have twenty-two businesses involved. Uh, they signed up two new members over the last month, uh, Service Master and Moonlit Bay Resort, which is another, uh, resort over on East Devil's Lake. And, um, they have their annual meeting scheduled for October seventeenth with, uh. Lieutenant Governor Sanford, uh, as a keynote speaker.
What's the date on?
October seventeenth.
October seventeenth.
Holiday showcase is scheduled for November thirteenth.
Okay. Not yet? Okay.
I have just two quick ones. Um, I think I've mentioned over before, uh, we had our, uh, County Housing Authority Board meeting, uh. Last week, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, no, last week, we take. The, uh. Section eight portion of the County Housing Authority that we oversee right now, um. We have overs, uh, oversaw in the past Cavalier Counties as well as Cooperstown's, uh, and ran their section eight programs. Um, as well as our physical properties here in the county. As of, I'm trying to remember the actual date, I think it's September one. Uh, Cavalier County, uh, their section eight program as well as Cooperstown are gonna be folded into Ramsey County Housing Authority. So they will cease to exist and they will roll in, cause we've been running them anyway and it was a lot of, we basically, Paula had to do three sets of paperwork every month just to run them. And when we're essentially reporting in, reporting out. So, and, and, uh, their sponsoring agencies, Cavalier County Commission as well as, I think it's Cooperstown, uh, City Council, we're both in favor of that. Uh, they're, and then they'll each get one, uh, board appointment to our CHA, so our board's gonna grow from five members to seven members. But a majority, uh, five of us will still be from Ramsey County, but then it will allow for the voices to be heard, uh, on any questions or comments and stuff, so. That's one thing. The other thing would be, uh, Northeast Nine, uh, County Commissioners Meeting, uh, is tomorrow night. I apologize for the date. I know we're right in the middle of harvest. It wasn't my first, uh, option either, but we're going to have a presentation. And the date was basically set because, uh, we're gonna have a presentation from lawyers, uh, representing the firms that are overseeing the national opioid, uh, litigation suit. Of, uh. You know, uh, Burley County has, uh, signed on, Cass County's looked into it, I thought, and Jeff, Jeff brought it to my attention and Kurt Olufsen has been kind of. The go-between between, uh, uh, these law firms and in-state here, uh, to. You know, basically bring it to that venue so we could try to get as many people to see the location at one point, uh, as, as possible. So it, it should be interesting. Uh, we had Social Services Board meeting last night and we actually had, uh, Patrick Plenel, who is the Director of Operations at Hartview in Candy. Give us a small, a short presentation about addiction treatment. And the opioid, opioid crisis. And he said, even as of today, when we know the opioid crisis is happening, there are still enough OxyContin prescriptions written every day to give a bottle of pills to every. Or, and I think it's a year, to give a bottle of pills to every single person that lives in the United States.
Oh.
Think about that for a moment. So we have a massive amount of, and it's gonna be something, we're gonna deal with huge, you know, in a large prospective social services district health going forward because. People are starting to recognize this as a problem. The drug companies are starting to recognize this as a problem. They're gonna pull back opioids. They're still gonna be a dependence. So what's gonna fill that dependence? Illicit drugs. The sheriff's gonna see it. He's already seen it.
Already seen it.
Heroin, all kinds of different street drugs, you know, pill trading, everything like that.
What do you hear down on radio this morning? Streeter North Dakota, two hundred thousand dollar drug rights. You're, well, how many people in Streeter? Hundred, twenty, probably?
But that's what they're gonna hide out in small towns where they're not gonna be noticed and where they can stay quiet. And we talked about it at the meeting last night, it's getting to the point, you don't even know if you see a vehicle out in the middle of nowhere in the country that's parked on a side road. Doesn't look familiar. You always kind of say to yourself, maybe it might be something going on unfortunately, but it's, it's something we're gonna deal with because once you get addicted to them. It's, it's very, very difficult to get unaddicted, you know? So it's, it's gonna be an interesting presentation. I'm, I don't know. Uh, from the standpoint of if it's something as us in the county, we want to get on board with or anything, but I thought it would be just interesting to learn something about it, cause we know what's up there, so. Uh, tomorrow night, five thirty start, uh.
Five thirty supper.
Five thirty supper, right here at the Armory, we're meeting room, five thirty start, start for the supper, six P M. Sorry.
I mean, I, I come for supper though.
Yes, anybody wants to come to Candy. Uh, and, uh, yeah, and the city, I believe, has their own meeting set aside by themselves.
That was today.
Yes. So, uh, yeah, they were gonna come in and talk with the city as well.
I gotta let you know as well.
Uh, these, the lawyers came in and they gave a separate presentation to the city. I just thought that the group would get really big and the meeting would get really long with a ton of questions if we added the city in as well as curating nation is, is what they were looking at, so. Okay. Hope to see you all then. Any further announcements or anything to come before the meeting? Seeing none, we are there.